Hi, I'm Gabby Salone. I'm Student Government Vice President, representing Student Government. And in the month of November, we did turkey baskets. We delivered them on November 26th to the monastery and Cumberland families. A hundred and fifty baskets were sent. A hundred and fifty turkeys were collected along with boxes of bread and baked goods to be donated. This year, we really saw our school come together to help the less fortunate in our community more than ever. We also had the junior ring ceremony. Rings were given on Tuesday, December 2nd. The ceremony went well and all rings were received and distributed the next day. This is the second time we've had the ceremony during school. And then we had the eighth grade showcase. Cumberland High School had its annual eighth grade showcase to display the activities and give tours of the high school to incoming freshmen. Student Government had a table and was represented throughout the night. Many freshmen were interested in joining. And our upcoming events for December are Adopt a Family that's going on from, well, it started the 2nd and is going on to the 16th. We picked four families from Cumberland, two from the high school and two from BF Norton. And then we're also doing wreaths of giving, so we have four wreaths and community members and faculty and students can choose families to give the wreath to. And then on December 18th, we're having a Student Government meeting to wrap the gifts for Adopt a Family. And then that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes. Organizational meeting from 11:13. Regular meeting, 11:13. Special meeting, 11:18. Approval of Minutes. Executive session, 11:13. The Enrollment Report from December. School Police Report from November. And Residency/Truancy Report from December. Pleasure of the committee on the Consent Agenda. Approved by Mr. Fiorello. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Those opposed? And then we should carry seven to there. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Booth.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to take these out of order a little bit first. If I could have Mr. Joyce Bonner please come up. We have a Coach of the Year in our midst. Ms. Joyce Bonner, Israel and Track Coaches Association Cross-Country Coach of the Year. Coaching for 14 years across country, indoor track, outdoor track. I actually pulled her license. We found out she's coaching for so long, it's from prom to meditation, not even ride. Doing a great job, so congratulations, Coach of the Year. And next, I'd like to call. Now, we have once again this year, our second year of the School Professional of the Year. To start things off, I want to tell you what happened. When we picked this stadium, we played for McCourt Middle School the other day. You can be surprised if the whole building went to the gymnasium. We have filmed the first minute and a half. I want to show you the minute and a half of the film, but I'm surprised.
In Cumberland, we have two great awards to be held. The Teacher of the Year and School Professional of the Year. I happen to say, this year, one of those two award winners is in North Carolina. This year, we have the 2014 Support Professional of the Year. The winner is... Ms. Diana Tatum.
So here's a prize. And now here she is to receive the award. She gets a plaque to take home with her. And we have the perpetual plaque which goes on the wall in Hubble and which that has two days.
Very nice.
So, and congratulations. Also on the website, you can see she's on the website. Next up, I think we have some wreath presentations. First, we have National Writing Day presentation. Nicola.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Lanning and I have been a member of the CHS faculty for three years, teaching self-help English. At the beginning of the school year, I asked a few students to comment on their experiences with writing. Some responses included, "I enjoy it, but I have to be interested in the topic." "I find it difficult to express myself through writing, especially in a structured response." And finally, "I do it because I have to." Since many of our students echo these statements, the English department recognized that our students would benefit and possibly enjoy participating in NCTE's Nationally Recognized Day on Writing. On this day, schools throughout the U.S. embrace writing in its various creative forms and students can write for the sake of writing. This year, we participated in our first National Day of Writing. Our entire student body and faculty members visited six different stations around our buildings. These stations included a six-word memoir, a reflective writing, a reflective gallery walk, blackout poetry, thank you notes, slam poetry, and word games. Each station was run by volunteer faculty members and students from our debate team and writing center. As an English teacher, I found our Writing Day heartwarming and motivating to see our reluctant writers, musicians, high achievers, athletes, introverts, extroverts, artists, and so on, express their creativity, personality, and emotions through different types of writing. Our Writing Day even went viral with hashtag CHS Voice trending number one in the Twitter world. With the collaboration of students in various departments, I hope the CHS National Day on Writing becomes an annual tradition for our students at Cumberland High School. And we do have some photos from the day, too.
So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. And next up, we have Breast Cancer Awareness Week presentation.
Hi, Danielle. I'm Michelle Mathant-Tasha, Special Education Teacher at Cumberland High School.
I'm Sandra Koppa, Special Education Teacher at Cumberland High School.
We want to talk to you today about one of the many activities that took place at CHS in the month of October, and that is Breast Cancer Awareness Week. Alan Tamaro approached us probably near the end of September with some information from the Gloria Gemma Flames of Hope series. And he said, "Do you guys think we could do something with this?" I don't think he ever anticipated that we were going to plan the new activities that we were able to pull together and plan and have our school come together in such a great way. And Sandra's going to talk now about some of the activities that we did.
So, thanks to Michelle and her wonderful event planning strategies. We got together so that we could raise awareness and hopefully make some kind of a donation to the Gloria Gemma Foundation. We sold T-shirts, student-signed messages, in hope of love to their family and members, two huge banners that we had in the cafeteria that were later hung at the overpass. We know that people don't like that, but the students love it. And we had a cupcake challenge that the advisories participated in decorating. And the students voted on which classroom won, which advisory won the best decorating. And everything was sold, all the baked goods were then sold at the football game that Friday night, which we extended our pink wave that was going on throughout the high school into the football stadium, including the cheerleaders, football team, the, all the athletes, the fans, everybody that participated. The... I'm sorry.
If I could just say that Ms. Lanning's advisory won the cupcake challenge. So, the level of support that we received from our teachers, our staff, and our students was more than any of us could imagine. Our students donated what they could. If it was pennies in their pocket, they donated it to the cause. One in eight women are diagnosed with breast cancer, so many of our students have family members who have been touched by this. And we truly demonstrated how one student body and one faculty can come together to support a cause so close to all of our hearts. And we're proud to say that CHS donated over $1,200 to the Gloria Gemma Breast Cancer Foundation in honor of our three survivors at our high school, Sandra Koppa, Arlisa Bar, and Krista Murphy.
Thank you. We have some photos, too, from the...
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to report that on Tuesday, December 2nd, the McCourt and North Cumberland Middle School combined chorus, under the leadership of Tom Alger and Shannon Davis, music teachers in the district, and Shannon is also the choir director at McCourt Middle School. They all performed at the State House, and you are seeing right now some pictures of that performance. I should also report that four McCourt Middle School students were accepted into the Junior All-State Groups. Yana de Poyes, grade eight. Angela Moran, grade eight. Amanda Meakin, grade seven. And Madeline Grenier, grade seven, were all accepted into the Junior All-State Group. And by all accounts, the students' performance was very impressive.
Very impressive. So, I think Mrs. Bonner should also get the award for the hardiest coach, because she's the one who's always outside in the rain and the snow, at the fields, helping to sell tickets to the, to the, the community. And congratulations to you on that award. And what I, what I just want to say is I appreciate the exposure that the high school's getting to, things around writing, poetry, all of that wonderful stuff that we often think gets taken away because of the expectations around Common Core, but it's nice to know that there's still that interest of weaving it in and continuing that, as well as exposing them to breast cancer awareness, because that's not something in my generation we ever would have talked about in this school. So to have that exposure, to say that it's okay and that we're here to support it, I really appreciate the effort that we went through. Next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's Report, Funding Formula, and the BEP. We're going to save our discussion for this evening's BEP meeting, which will occur immediately following this meeting. We do have some new information about some of the audit details that we'll share with you, as well as kind of how the obligations around the non-educational expenses, the non-EP or the non Core expenses tie up this year in comparison to last year. Moving on, the next item is Report of Standing Committee's Payment of Bills. Mr. Demarica.
I'm Chair of the Finance Subcommittee. Did meet on Tuesday night at 5:30. We reviewed the bills that were presented to us. On 30 above, we approved for the full committee, $1,259,751.
Mr. Demarica moves passage of the payment of bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And then we should carry seven to there. Next item is Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Again, Mr. Demarica.
I'm Chair. We did meet on Tuesday night as well. We discussed the Business Office's monthly report. There's some resolutions that we'll discuss later. And I got to the CHS BNDs, Communication Coordinator's Service Contract. We did have discussion about the RFP for bid submission of the BEP, and that got tabled to the next meeting. We heard from Mr. Mitchell and others about the increased ELL services that we're going to need for the district. Wayne Alexander gave us a report on Sedesco, what they've done for repairs and maintenance for the district. And we heard from Dr. Carwell about the special ed, educated coordinated model that we're going to, the district is going to move forward. That includes the Finance Subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. Either Mr. Demarica or someone from the administration, could you talk a little bit about, for the committee's behalf, the increased ELL service requirement and then the, the model, the special education model that you're proposing? Just briefly.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can talk briefly about the ELL issue. We are experiencing a significant increase in the number of ELL students coming into the district. And there's a lot of work that goes into determining where they're, where each of the ELL students are and their level of proficiency in speaking English. Obviously, the more challenged they are with English, the more intervention support they need. And we're seeing that most of the ELL students coming into the district require what is been identified as Level 1 support. So there's Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 support. Level 1 support requires three hours of intervention per day. Level 2, two hours of support. And Level 3, one hour of support. So, at the current time, we are not meeting all of the required hours that have been established in regulation. So, we're going to be generating, pulling all of this information and sharing it with the committee within the next, hopefully by the first meeting in January.
Just a quick question. Is that because we have new students in the district or the standards have changed?
The, well, the standards are changing, but they, they haven't, I, I don't believe that they have been officially changed as of yet. However, we have an increasing number of ELL students coming into the, I mean, significant number.
In terms of numbers, if memory serves, we were just on the Special 100 last time we reported out. I think by the 1:30.
And, and just quickly, are they, are those students serviced at a specific school or is it, does it, is it throughout the district?
It is. We're, we're seeing an increase at all of the elementary schools especially.
Are, are other school districts experiencing this?
Yes. In fact, we've been in consultation with some of the districts, you know, trying to figure out how we can combine services to meet the needs. We're at, we're at a point now, because of the number of ELL students that we have in the district, that we actually, with the change in regulation, we're going to need an ELL district administrator because of the number of students we have.
Like I said, the best outcome is to hire people who are dual-certified, but those are hard to come by. We have a lot of those folks at BF already. We need more of those.
Understood. Thank you. And then the other item, just to highlight, oh, the, the special education model?
Sure. Really quickly, as you know, we haven't had a deputy special education administrator for some time. The public just isn't there. We're looking for an alternative model for the year. This model, same cost structure, but using more folks or, or more groups around it, as we say. So, at the high school, we already have a coordinator, teacher, person in the role. The new model would have a middle school special education coordinator or teacher in a role, and two at the elder. So, and we talked through with the finance folks how that would work, and we talked about looking at that model and seeing how, how we'd like it as we go into the spring, either continue the model or readvertise again for the following.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so moving on. We're all set with the Fiscal Management. Mr. Demarica?
Yes, we have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, Policy and Procedures did meet on Tuesday night. There was a discussion about amending policies, I-16, high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements, which is going to now include a social piece for dances and proms and all of that extracurricular. And also, the K3 School Community Relations Policy, which will be read later. But that is also just a intent, intention of making it very clear that we intend to completely communicate well with parents within the district. We are also discussing a gift acceptance policy for administrators, teachers, coaches, across the boards, early in the discussion, though. And we're also looking at existing policies that we may want to bring back and look at next steps for what improvements should be made on those. And further down the docket, there are some votes to be taken and some readings for the record.
Excellent. Thank you. Nicely done. Next item on the agenda is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update. Mrs. Teal.
Thank you. Achievement this evening, rather. We discussed student recognition as it relates to standard-based grading in the middle schools. We're going to continue that discussion January 20th at 6:00 p.m. Sort of in summary, the discussion sort of centered around how to handle student recognition for honors and high honors, and whether it was appropriate to do it as, on a semester basis, or perhaps it needs to be done as, taking a look at the student for the whole year. Because with standard-based grading, it's not what students know at a particular point in time, it's how students are progressing as they learn those standards. So, at times, it's not necessarily fair to the students to judge them on a standard that they're working on, not that they've had time to achieve. So, it may be some type of a hybrid system where students are recognized for achievement or effort or improvement, and then at the end of the year, there will be a recognition whether or not they achieved high honors or honors, and how we're going to handle the National Honor Society at the middle school level. So we'll finish that discussion, or we'll continue that discussion in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for policies. And we have new policies, which are the second reading, and that's G-12 Professional Responsibility for Certified Professionals, and then G-13 Teacher Standards. And we also have amended policies. Mr. Fiorello, do you want to start with the new policies?
Yes, so that's the, the new policies, G-12 Professional Responsibility for Certified Professionals and G-13 Teacher Standards be read into the record for their second reading, and then we'll give a vote later on in the docket.
Go ahead.
Okay. And also, the amended policies, I-16, high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements, and K3 School Community Relations should be read into the, read into the record as they have been amended. And they will also be voted on later in the docket.
Understood. Thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to speak on any of the policies that we just mentioned? So there's two new ones, G-12 Professional Responsibility, G-13 Teacher Standards. Then we have the High School Athletic and Extracurricular Eligibility Requirements and K3 School Community Relations. Anyone this evening? No? Yes, Mrs. Teal?
Sure. There was another policy, G-17, having to do with the middle school. Is that going to be coming up for extracurricular later on?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so hearing none. The public comment, we will call the, the public hearing closed at this point. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Does anyone in the public wish to speak on any matters this evening? Sure.
Sorry, speaking wrong, but they called me at work, so I got to get back after this. First, I owe you an apology, Dr. Durkman, because I was one of the ones that was skeptical about the Chromebooks a year ago. And I said, "I really don't know that's going to work." You said, "Trust us, we'll make it all work and see what happens." I said, "Well, okay, and admit it." And I think that's great. So, since we just had the report cards, you all get a four, you exceeded the standard. But while we're talking about the report cards, the reason I'm here tonight is, I feel like and a bunch of parents I've talked to and a bunch of students, it's really good when you're a soccer person, because you get to hear everybody while you're waiting for all the games, is the standard-based grading as it is now really deserves it, too. It is not doing what I think you think it's supposed to do, and it definitely is not doing what the parents expected it to do. I remember sitting with you back at the community open house, as I guess we call them, at the neighborhood, and there was a whole bunch of concerns from the parents, and we were told the same things, the Chromebooks. Give us time, let us implement it, things will come out. And we said, "Okay, let's give it a shot." Then I was here last spring with a bunch of concerns, as other parents did. We were told again, "We need time to implement it. Give us time, let's see it." We said, "Okay." Well, now you've had the time, and we've seen the first report cards. The good thing is frankly, there's no grade anxiety anymore. My daughter, among others, who got a low grade, were worried because they couldn't get the 95, they couldn't get high honor roll or anything else without really kicking and doing it. That's gone away. I know most of them are going to say, "You've heard before." But what's really frustrating is, every time someone says it, we're told, "Wait, it's going to work it out." We're now a third of the way through the year. At this point, it all should be locked down and figured out. So I just wanted to go through what I've seen, and I know what other parents have seen, and if I'm wrong, tell me. We'll go from that. Because right now, it's not a reporting issue. The system is broken. We were told originally that this would give us fairer grade, it would be more indicative of what they can do. What at least a bunch of us have seen at this point is, any of the English composition type things, social studies, English or whatever, to take the test now, you're told, "Come up at the main," and help me, I don't know all the details, "Come up at the main points of conflict in the story." So the kids are writing it down. That's a three, because they have the standard. So, we're watching, and paragraphs are becoming two pages. And so I'm one of them, saying, "Why are you writing so much?" It's because we want to get the four. Said, "Well, what do you need to do to get it?" And the standard answer is, "We don't know, but we got to be above what the question is asking." So basically, what's going on is everyone's throwing everything in the kitchen sink into this thing, because they don't know what to do for a four. So the only answer, I don't disagree with them, is if I was an eighth grader, or even if I was at work, is that, "Here's your job requirements. You want a merit raise, you got to do above. Well, I'm going to do everything, and you go and figure out what it needs to be." So on the subject matter, one of the reasons I think more homework is coming up is because they're all overloading, trying to find it. Now, we had the parent-teacher competition yesterday, and I have no complaints with the administration, I have no complaints with the teachers, they've done a hell of a job in what they've been handed. But when I said, "How do they know how to improve it?", and the answer was, "Go back to the matrix." Well, the matrix doesn't answer that question. Matrix basically says, "Do better than what an average student should do." That's great, but that doesn't answer anything, unlike before, when you could go and say, "Okay, where are you and where are you going from there?" In math, I'm still confused, because you have two threes and fours. And the way it is now is if the kids can answer the four, where I come from, if you can show you're better than the grade level, you're done. But what happens here is, you can answer the four, but you make a mistake on a vocab word or anything, you actually have a two. You have to retake the test. You pass the two, now you got your four. If it truly is a standard base and they've gone above, if you can answer the four, you're done. I mean, that's math or any of those kinds of subjects. But if you only have a two and you retake it, you can't get the four, because you can only retake to get to the three. So the only shot you got at the four is that first time, which by the way, you never really learn, because that's the extra stuff. So after you see it, and someone says, "Oh, that's what you need to do," they can't go back and say, "I understand it now, let me go for the four." So they're all being just kind of battered by, they can't get up there. So the whole idea of it being fairer, I don't think is true. And one of the things at soccer, you start listening to the kids and say, "What do you think?" You know, you can hear them complaining, and the standard thing that keeps coming back is the teachers have too much power. And I finally jumped in, because you try not to with teens, because then they stop talking. But I did, and I said, "What does that mean?" And in their eyes, is they do an essay, and, and I don't blame the teachers, this is just how they perceive it. If you see the exam and you get a three, if you write it again, you may get a four, because the teacher likes you, because there's not a clear definition of what you need to do between a two, a three, and a four. So the fairer grading, I don't think has happened when you do this kind of thing. We've been told to celebrate the threes. I've got papers that came back from the teachers when we first got this, saying threes are good, and that's what they should be shooting for. I'm not a tiger parent, I really don't care if she makes honor roll, I want to know she understands things. understands things. But when you get a three, it means one of a couple things. Either you did it right, you blew off the exam, you get to retake it and get a three again, you did almost everything for a four, but you missed one of the two problems, which gets you back to the three. We don't know what a three means because it's everything from an 80 to roughly a 94, 95. So the kids are studying, knowing the odds of getting a four are minimal. You make one mistake on a four, it's done, no option to retake. They're starting to look and say, why knock myself out if I can't see it and I can't get an honor roll or anything else? Why are we doing this? Now, fortunately, no one's done that yet because the Chromebooks are kicking butt and they're like, okay, we're into this thing now. But we can't tell where they are and what they're doing. I was told from some of the teachers, they like this because they can see who's meeting their goals. One of the biggest things we heard forwards at the meetings was, well, now I can see all these twos, which means they're not hitting standard, which confused me because I teach. If I see everyone getting 60 sevens, I know something's wrong and I'm going to retake it arbitrarily, throw the twos in there instead of number grades, doesn't answer that question. So I'm not sure why they want to do that. All the kids that are performing well, assuming they didn't get fours, get nothing for at this point. And I understand there's a problem, but that should have been dealt with before we implemented the system. Because you have a bunch of kids, get their report cards and say, hey, did I make honor roll? And the answer we got was, we don't know, we don't know what an honor roll is, but did you get good grades? Well, I got lots of threes and fours. Okay, and then we moved on. I know there's plans of thinking about it or something. But I would submit, if you don't have a system that does it in short steps, I understand some of these standards, they're going to get twos now, that doesn't seem to encourage people to work. If it's a year-long thing where by the end they're going to get a three, it means for the first two semesters, you can knock yourself out, you're expected to get a two. I don't see how that's encouraged the kids to move forward. I'm not big into the number system, but at the same time, that's even worse because now I've been told, now, minds don't have that with the standards they have, but I've talked to other parents and said, my kid got a two, but they say that's good. Well, if that's true, then why take tests? I mean, you're going to get a two anyway at that point, what's the point? It's discouraging to everybody. The biggest thing we heard was parents get better feedback. I got to admit, I have an engineering degree, I looked at that report card, I still don't know. I finally looked at my daughter and said, you did well, right? And she said, yeah. And it's a basic issue. I don't know as a parent what a three means. So in short, there's no clear avenue to what is expected and there's no way for us to know. But I know you shouldn't just blow up the system. So if you really, really have to keep standard-based grading, I would suggest the following things that could be done now. One is in Aspen and the report cards, what we really need to see is what's the highest you can do on the standard? Some of the standards only go to threes. And that's fine, the vocab stuff, they don't give four, thank goodness, because I don't know how you exceed the standard on a vocab test. But the report cards I got and all the tests come back, she gets a three. I don't know if that's good or bad frankly, because I don't know if it's going higher or not, because there's nothing anywhere in the system that tells me what the high, what is the maximum you can do. At the same time, I also can't tell anymore, we did last year, means and medians. One of the issues will be with the twos, if the meeting of the class is a two, then okay, my kid's doing okay. But when mine's gets a three or mine's gets a two and says the test is really hard, everybody's having problems, I don't know if I can, not trust is the wrong word, her group may have a problem, but the rest of the class is doing fine. So I got a three and I don't know what it means relative to everybody else. I also don't know where that three is. The standard question from last night, as I talked to all the teachers, was, okay, so is the three, she's barely alive, she almost got the four, or is she in the average? They'd answered that, now I know where we are. If we can get that plus minus back in, then we'd be okay. I don't know how many times she retook the test, I mean, I know because I've asked her, but I don't remember from September how many retakes she took. And I see threes, but I don't know, is it a three because she keeps retaking the test and got it that way? Did she barely get through it? Or you know what, if she had just gotten one of those two four questions right, she would have had the four, but she blew that and she went right through the threes. We can't see any kind of a thing with it. If you have the ability to retake for the four, then we're in good shape. Right now, in order to get a four on math or something, you basically are doing something you haven't seen before. I understand they want to see that, but what gets frustrating, I think, for the kids is once they see how to do it, because they misread it, because there's only normally two questions, they never get a chance to go back and say, oh, I can do this now. So they have one shot at the four, if they don't get it, that's it, we're done. The learning qualities that you all put in, I'm saying you all because when we brought it back up locally, there was a recommendation because they had us meet about, you know, what to do with report cards and we were told it was the district's decision. I'm not sure why we have exceeding standards on things like does homework or enthusiasm. I care as a parent that they either are respectful and enthusiastic or not. But I honestly don't believe any parent is going to their kid and saying, you know, you're enthusiastic, but you're not super enthusiastic, so you only got threes on that and not fours. And you did your homework, but you didn't do extra homework. Well, they should, I mean, if they want to, that's fine. But they've done what they were asked to do. My understanding on teacher evaluations is uncertain things, it is one to three, not all the way up. He met a standard or they didn't. And then on other things, they've got scales. My understanding is we're going to try to do that here and it never got into the report cards. So my kid's got threes and fours are over and half the time it's personality, right? Sometimes she's quiet and she doesn't want to help everybody all the time. That's okay, as long as she's not disrespectful. As a parent, I don't care that she didn't get the four, I won't care if she gets a two, that's a conversation at the table, but not a four. Last thing I would suggest, and if you want, I'll pay for the lunch, is I think you all need to talk to your stakeholders. And right now, that's the students. I don't think anybody has asked the students what they truly think about the system. The closest I've seen was I actually saw a survey, I was hoping it was done, on what the students think honor roll should be. But I really think, and if you need parents to do it, you let us know, is you guys go to the two middle schools, throw all the teachers and the administration out of the room so no one's worried, they're going to be, they all for doing it, and just ask them two questions. Do you know right now what it takes to get a four? And then the scary question frankly is, do you think the system is fair? And I honestly believe, and if I'm wrong, I'll come back and apologize, but I honestly believe you're going to find, right now, they're going to say it's not fair in how they're graded. They are not being graded by what they're doing, they're being graded by the opinions of their teachers. Again, it's not the teacher's fault and you're doing it fairly from what we've seen. I have no complaints with the grades they're getting. My complaint is, from the student's point of view, it's a crapshoot at this point, they really don't know. If I'm wrong on something, let me know. But this is what I've seen in talking to others and we didn't have any other avenues, so I came here, hope that was the right place. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is new business, discussion and or vote to approve RFP bid submission of the EEP. Mr. Block, you said this was in your subcommittee?
Madam Chair, this was in the finance subcommittee. And Tuesday night, we did get one proposal from the company. And we have tabled it to the next meeting to ask for additional information about this company and what they would like to do with the cost.
Okay. So are you moving to table it this evening?
Yes, I'm moving to table it to the next finance subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Do I have a second? Mr. Dunne and Mr. Fiorello, all those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Sedexo facilities activity report.
Madam Chair, that was in finance, that was given to us for informational purposes. Sedesco has at this time spent $148,000 of the $435,000 budget for spending. And they're running about $30,000 more than last year due to completing substantial capital projects. In the Google docs, there was a copy of the facilities report that everyone to review. So that was taken just as advisement.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item, discussion and or vote to approve increased ELL teacher support.
Again, I hope to go, Madam Chair, that was in finance subcommittee and I'll leave it back to Dr. Thornton and Mr. Mitchell to explain if any further.
I think we already had the conversation and I think we're fine. We'll come back to you in January, probably with our hard number.
And let's keep on moving. Mr. DeMonica, resolution SCPR 12, 2014-20 CHS band instruments.
Madam Chair, that was under finance again, under a three to zero vote, we approved awarding a bid to Rix Music for the amount of... Give me one second. The amount of $9,995. This is to buy percussion equipment and we have put this in the budget to start to restore music back up to the high school and get things moving. So I would move that, we approved the awarding of a bid of SC-PR-12-2014-22 Rix Music.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCPR 12, 2014-21, at the amount of $9,995 to Rix Music. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dunne, and this is for percussion. Is this Dr. Thornton, one of likely to be other improvement activities around the band program? Is this satisfied?
Yeah, the band, we put it in groups, percussion one, brass being one, uniforms, all the aspects, we're marching band, and also we use for the concert bands as well.
And we have a concert band in place presently?
That they played last night, they were very good.
At parent teacher conferences. And tonight's North Carmella Middle School's performance, the Chai List as well. Anyhow, I apologize for that, digression. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other questions or further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. DeMonica, I think we have more here. SCPR 12, 2014-21 Communications Coordinator Services Contract.
Again, Madam Chair, we did discuss this in finance under a three to zero vote. It was approved to send it to the full committee to begin July 1st, 2015, to extend the contract of Justin Martin. And the amount not to exceed $3200 per month. And the administration will be coming back to us in January in regards to amending the current contract so that Mr. Martin could start beginning January 1st with the extended hours network we're asking him to do at the website and so forth. So that will come next month where they change that current contract. And I would move the passage.
So Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCPR 12, 2014-21. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
I'll address this to whomever might. So when I reviewed that, this, it just mentions extended hours, but not the number of hours. That's not contained at all anywhere in the contract? Is that something that should be contained or it's really up to the eye of who's ever reading the contract, what the number of hours is?
Mr. Block?
I believe Dr. Thornton stated the hours going up to thirty...
I believe we said 32 in the meeting, from 20.
Should that be contained within the contract since there's no number of hours in the
We did not include the number of hours because since it's a flat stipended amount per month, there are some months where he goes far, where he far exceeds the number of hours. And there are some months where he may not reach exactly 32 hours. So that was the ballpark for where we came up with the amount of the stipend. So he does not, because it's a purchase service and he is a contracted independent contractor, he does not file a time sheet. So Dr. Thornton will monitor from the work that he is being given to ensure that, you know, we're within the hours and if we need to adjust that contract, we will. But we didn't want to lock him into 32 hours if there was a month where we needed him for 60 hours.
That's a good value right now. It is valuable. We said high school view book, it was around, I think, 80 hours of a view book over the past two months, so it gives a lot of value right here. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Dr. Thornton, can you make certain that the school committee and the council gets a copy, a personal copy of the view book for each of us? It was pretty impressive. I know they had it at the open house, the school open house. Next item on the agenda, discussion and or vote to approve second reading of new policies, G 12 professional, oh, wait, I apologize, we'll move back up to F, E, G and F. Discussion and or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for 2014, 2015 school year. Mr. Mitchell?
We don't have any this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Need me go all the way back? No action on that. Next item, discussion and or vote to approve second reading of new policies, G 12 professional responsibility for certified professionals and G 13 teacher standards. Mr. Fiorello?
These were before us, before, before, yeah. This is the second reading tonight, so we are able to vote on these for passage this evening.
Excellent. And are you moving passage?
I am moving passage of G 12 professional responsibility for certified professionals. Should we take this together or?
To the committee? Are we good taking them together?
And G 13 teacher standards.
So Mr. Fiorello moves passage of G 12 and G 13, second in by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Aren't very enthusiastic this evening. Next item on the agenda, discussion and or vote to approve amended policies, I 16 high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements and K three school community relations. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, we discussed these policies on Tuesday night. They were amended from their original policies. They are listed on the district website and as they are amended policies, we can vote on them tonight. Would you like to take these together or separately?
Together, separately?
Sure. I can make a motion to approve I 16 high school athletic and extracurricular eligibility requirements.
Do I have a motion by Mr. Fiorello? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
I reviewed these actually earlier today. And the question I have on this one is, nowhere in here is there, I'll say, an override by, whether it be a teacher, administrator, let's just say, because it's based on the previous year, so let's say this is sophomore this year and the end of freshman year, they had two failing classes and over the summer, they went to some school and they took care of everything. But now they're ineligible, let's leave athletics out for the sake of this argument, they're ineligible to do a club. It may be at the time, at the end of freshman year, there was some stuff going at home that was distracting them from their grades. They've straightened themselves out over the summer and now they're ineligible, by what I read in this policy, correct me if I'm wrong, to participate in any clubs or athletic activities. And I would, myself, would like to see something in the policy that provides somebody the ability to override that if there were extenuating circumstances. That's my only comment on that. Thank you.
Dr. Thor.
The other question I have on that is that could be a slippery slope and one man's circumstances, other man's, you know, suck it up. So I'm not sure how we would differentiate between circumstances.
Does it come up often where you have extenuating circumstances, like what Mr. Duffy described? Mr. Mitchell?
If I could just go from my perspective, having been a high school administrator for 18 years, first of all, I think the goal was to make all extracurricular activities, so that would be athletics and drama, chorus, I mean, you know, all of the extracurricular kinds of activities that students have an opportunity to participate in, to be consistent with those. And I can tell you that from an athletic standpoint, eligibility for students, for high school students, other than freshmen, is based on their quarterly performance. So let's just take a sophomore, for example. If they were participating in athletics in the fall, their eligibility would be based on their performance in the previous quarter, the fourth quarter. So, you know, and I know that a lot of thought has been given to, okay, well, gee, if a student goes to summer school, you know, they may have failed three or four classes, but they take all three or four over the summer and pass them, then they should be allowed to play. But I think there was, there were some issues related to that. So the decision was based on their quarterly performance as opposed to that opportunity of the summer. based on their quarterly performance as opposed to that opportunity of the summer. And again, we wanted to be consistent between all, I mean, we wanted to be consistent with all, which I prefer to, because that was the thing.
Anyone else? Mr. DeMonica?
Madam Chair, I just think we kind of penalized the children in a way that if they didn't do it through the fourth quarter and they were able to take one class during the summer, and we accept that grade, and so we put them into their transcript that they had passed the grade for the summer, or for the year, that we kind of penalized them getting on, on the, you know, starting September 1st, that you didn't do it last quarter of the school year, but you did during the summer, but we're not giving them credit for that, for going to summer school and doing their job. And I think it kind of hurts the children that they could say, why bother going if they're not going to get credit for it?
So would we defer it back to the policy?
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify. The language says a student may not participate if they fail more than one. So we're not talking about a student failing one class. A student can fail a class and still be eligible. It's, a student may fail no more than one. So they can fail a class and still be eligible.
Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries six, one, correct? Mr. Duffy and the dissenting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, K-3 School Community Relations. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, K-3 was also voted on, for three vote, vote for passage, and a move for passage of K-3 School Community Relations.
Mr. Fiorello moves passage of K-3, and Mr. Salvatore seconds that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Spol.
Good evening. I only have a few for you today. So I have a resignation, so I request the advising consent of the school committee on our, I put retirement, but it's resignation, I'm sorry, of Stephanie Bello, girls varsity field hockey coach of Cumberland School Department, effective November 23rd of 2014.
Pleasure, the committee. Motion by Mr. DeMonica, seconded by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero.
I have two appointments for you this evening. I'm going to take them separately, if that's okay. So the first appointment, I request the advising consent of the school committee on the appointment of Eric Giorgio, secondary mathematics teacher for the Cumberland School Department, effective January 5th of 2015. Now, this would be a full-time position, he'd be starting with us as step one, at the 22% co-pay that the teachers have. Just for, just so you understand, this is, as I remember, we have retirement, and this will, we have long-term self in there right now, and this will, this is, now we fill the position. We found someone who will be certified and will be great for the district, and so this is that person, he's going to start right after the new year.
Pleasure, the committee. Well, there are three motions by Mr. Dutton, Mr. Fiorello, and Mr. DeMonica, saying it's really like math, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal, and I'm sorry, Mr. DeMonica, you're the, did the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? It's great we could find a math teacher for all of the school year.
We're very, we're very excited. He's brand new, we're very, we're very excited. And lastly, I request the advising consent of the school committee on the appointment of Kyle Santos as the Special Education Coordinator for the middle level for the Cumberland School Department, effective January 5th of 2015. Kyle Santos is a special educator who is at Mauchort Middle School, she's been with us for over a decade. We interviewed a number of candidates for this position, and Kyle was so impressive that it was a unanimous decision by the committee and Dr. Thornton and Mr. Mitchell, wholeheartedly agreed with our recommendation. Kyle's here tonight, and we're very excited to have her be part of this new model that we believe will really be great for the Cumberland School Department, so her request. So in addition, she's already unemployed, so this is that stipend position we talked about, what she'll receive, an additional stipend of $7,000.
Correct. Pleasure, the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, seconded by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? Ms. Santos, you had come to the committee when we were talking a little bit about Chrome Books, and how's that going for your students?
I think it is going really well. It is the, such a difference in so many students with this bill needs performance.
I'm sure for the organizationally challenged students, as I have three boys who definitely fit that bill. I can see the Chrome Book this year, we're not back at school in the middle of the day, so not only does it help...
They never, they never forget the Chrome Books.
No. Oh, that's good to hear, good to hear. All right, so that's a love topic, but appreciate the feedback. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Anyone? Oh, hold it, please.
I have one.
Oh, yes, Mr. DeMonica.
I just publicly elected, thank Mrs. Teal for going out of her way and ranging the baskets, donations that the school committee members made, to the happy basket. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad we could help the families.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Mr. Duffy?
I want to congratulate the district on the Hour of Code. I'm hoping somebody might have a quick update on how many schools participated in that. I know it wasn't on the agenda, but figured I'd congratulate them, I might get some answers on that.
Mr. Duffy, I can report, happy to report that all of the schools participated, and most of them are participating this week, but some, in order to get to as many students as possible, I think all of the schools are trying to get to all of the students, but yeah, they have made a real commitment to really focus on this, on this Hour of Code. So all of the, some really impressive things are happening in the schools, really impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to acknowledge Mayor McFarry and Councilor Schmidt, thank you for joining us, thank you for the reminder, gentlemen. It's just so nice to see you, and you've become just like a part of the family here, so I apologize. Acknowledging you each time. Anyhow, and I want to thank Mr. Duffy for bringing the Hour of Code to the district. I think it's a great thing that the school has embraced, and I know, in talking with Mr. Mitchell kind of early on about it, it was part of their discussion a few months ago, just so that they could prepare for it. Having a kid who came home ready to program at scratch, I was kind of excited about it. It's a very good thing.
It's what my kids want to do.
Excellent. Thank, thank Mr. Duffy every time I was up. Anything else? So Dr. Thornton, we do not have executive session?
We do not.
We do not, excellent. So I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, seconded, seconded by Mr. Dutton and Mr. Duffy, double Ds. All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:37, and for those who'd like to stick around, we'll have the BEP Subcommittee Meeting. I'll have it here. Yes, it will be here. Thank you. The agenda, two items on the agenda, discussion of project, projected ride fiscal sixteen state aid projections, and then the UCOA audited number. Will you, Mr. Fridnall, do you have some handouts for us for this?
Well, I have some UCOA stuff, the state aid number I gave out last month, I mean, I can try to put a copy or whatever.
Okay. Let's do that kind of quickly and... Yeah, I don't think this is going to take all that long. Whatever's easier for you. So just, just for a little background, it's my understanding now that RIDE breaks out the, the local shared tuition obligation, and that's sort of a new, a new column in what they provide to us, so that they're not having, it's still a projection though, right? It's not a, it's not a hard number.
This time, it's still a projection, right?
And when do they finalize that?
They'll finalize it, well, first of all, you can't do anything with the government government, the government's budget is out. The legislation is a thing of income, which I imagine, so...
Well, certainly a possibility, but we have no projections that they have. It's a little risky. It's an annual decision. Yeah, and the core amount went down from last year by twenty... The core number, the dollar per student has changed. So what we have here is fiscal thirteen actuals, and then the fiscal fourteen audited, and then the UCOA table that we've seen in other BEP discussions. So walk us through a couple of those items. Mr. Fridnall provides some highlights.
So first of all, the first question I could ask is about the state aid?
Yeah.
State aid? So the state aid projected at this point for Cumberland is eight hundred ninety-six thousand four twenty, plus there's two other pieces of state aid, again, reimbursement for non-public transportation and for the high cost, especially at students. And we estimate that to be another fifty-six thousand dollars between the two. So our state aid would be nine fifty-two five ninety-six, and of that, they project eight hundred and twenty-three thousand of that, eight twenty, excuse me, eight thirty-two one forty-seven, will be eaten up by child school enrollment. So we get a net increase next year of about a hundred twenty thousand four forty-nine. So that's the state aid projections. But I think I passed this out at, I think I did something on this at our last meeting, we went through also how, a little brief synopsis, how the state aid formula works and stuff. You know, the, the sheets that RIDE recently handed out to us as business managers, so that's the state number to start with. But then, as I just handed out to you, you recall last year, we're trying, we're doing this core calculation of actuaries, trying to find out what the state required, what the state would be paying us based on the funding formula, and what would be left there for the town to pick, you know, to, to make up the difference. And if you look at the thirteen numbers, if you recall, the sheet should be familiar to you, the remaining shortfall that we came up with for the town at that time was four million and seven thirty-five. So just to quickly review it, you go across the top, you took the core amount, which was eight six seven nine last year, times the number of students of forty-four seventy-five, gave you thirty-eight million eight thirty-eight. And the second piece of the formula, student success factor, which was thirty-four seventy-two last year, times a thousand seven free re-used students, for another three million four ninety-six. So it was forty, forty-two million three thirty-four. And when you ran through the, the third piece of the formula, property tax valuations and that quadratic equation stuff to get that state share ratio amount, that came up to forty point eight percent for Cumberland. So the amount due from the state was seventeen million two seventy-two. At the time, our state aid was thirteen million eight thirty-four, left remaining shortfall that would be paid out to us over four years, because this was after three years of the formula, but this, this year coming up the meeting for that fourth year, left three million four thirty-seven. And then we took the forty-two million dollars, the, the core amount, subtracted the state aid, the, the amount that we should get for state aid, the seventeen two seventy-two, that left twenty-five million dollars left. We took the non-core, and we added to that the non-core expenses, and you can see those on that sheet, three pages, it's kind of stapled under the 2013 year, that second page at the bottom, you see the non-core items such as, you know, teacher pension, and child schools and other stuff is up, eight and nine, ten items, yeah. They totaled eighteen million three twenty-eight, you add them together, you have forty-three million three ninety. The town appropriation I gave was thirty-seven two oh two. I applied other sources, things like rentals, preschool, Medicaid, fund balance, et cetera, as type of town revenues, things that we generate on our side, to serve that state aid. So I added that to the state number, the town number of thirty-seven two oh two, you get thirty-eight change, and when I subtracted that from the forty-three, you get four million seven thirty-five, and that was the amount last year we were hoping to, we, we went down for a request, I left four million four, we talked about, we had just, the subject was kind of fine tuned after that initial request, and we were hoping to get some type of discussion, though, maybe funding this over time, or, or that sort of stuff. So after thirteen, that was the number. What I did, and these numbers aren't yet audited, but they are going to be, they will be the numbers, but it's just not an audit issue yet, but these numbers won't change. I've done the same exercise for fourteen, I couldn't audit it now, just to, you know, because they're not. But the same calculations going across, the new total core of student success factor, forty-four three forty-six. The forty point five percent now is the state ratio, it's changed a little bit. The, the amount from the state, seventeen nine sixty, the state aid at that point was fourteen six thirty-five, so it was three million three twenty-four to go out over now three years instead of four. And the, and when you take this, you take the, the core amount minus the amount due from the state, you have twenty-six million, the non-core expenses now, you can see, we put on that same sheet on page two of the fourteen, they've gone up to nineteen million oh eighty-three, we can talk about them in a second. So when you add the two together, you get forty-five million, the town appropriation thirty-eight six ninety, other sources now, one million one ninety-eight, you have thirty-nine eight eighty-nine, so the numbers grew to five million five eighty from the four ninety-seven. So those are just two, you know, quick worksheets that you can kind of see, you know, all the different, you know, all the different pieces, state aid, core amounts, state information on number of kids, number of free kids, a lot of information on that sheet.
Questions or questions? So I have a few, Alex. The state shortfall from thirteen to fourteen, looks like that gap really isn't closing. Do, do we know why that there's not a more significant chunk taking out of that? So if we look at the gap in fourteen, it's, it's...
Three million?
Right, three point three.
It was three point four. Because every year they recalculate, it's recalculated every year, so that number's constantly changing. If you recall, I think the original number of Cumberland that they thought we were short was like, wasn't it, I forget when the mayor first said, it was like four million dollars or something that we were behind. That, it's three, it's, it continues to grow and change as, as these different core amounts, the student success factor, and core ratio, and, you know, a whole habit, if you recall the last sheet I gave you, whatever that number is, it'll eventually be divided over three, two, one, and then whatever that number is, it'll, it'll be each year in and out of your budget, whether it's an increase or a decrease, there'll be no more, you know, layer or didn't.
Right. So if, if our students stayed exactly the same, and the core amount annually stayed exactly the same, we would see like a five, four, and then we'd be two, one.
Yeah.
But that's not what's happening, because our student population is changing in some of its factors, like free and reused price lunch, we have roughly fifty more students, and that core amount went up by two hundred dollars, something like that. So all of that impacts this, yet we're the ones who don't benefit from the funding, that it's, it's not provided to us adequately. We, it's like the number just keeps staying right where it is, but our student population is becoming more needy.
Well, it has come down, and, you know, there's a couple, I mean, there's three pieces of the formula, this is fourteen, a fifteen, a fifteen, and another goes to forty-two percent, went to forty-two point eight. Those numbers, they keep changing, so, you know, it, you know, but eventually, whatever that number is, you'll get it all, and it may be the last year you get a million five, or you, you know, right now, we're scheduled to get that eight ninety-six that they're talking about, that's the number right now we're scheduled to get over the next three years. That may change because, remember, this is one year...
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's two four now, it's three three, so you got nine change last year, dropped to roughly two four. It doesn't, it changes based on, you know, changes, the original estimate was a four million dollars, we've grown on that. You know, we had, we had two and a half million after the first two years, after WHP had that one year, we tried to accelerate it initially, half a million, we got like a million the first year, a million and a half. We were two and a half million in after two years, and we're like, we're not going to get a million five the next five years? No, the numbers keep moving, and we've got much more of that.
Got it. Any questions? Mr. Duffy?
I don't want to ask you to make an assumption, Alex, but, so when I look at this as far as the remaining shortfall, we go from thirteen at four million seven to fourteen at five, five mil, uh, five and a half. I'm not asking if you're projecting, fifteen yet, but is this, I know it's only two years, so you can't really say it's a tiny, until you hit three, but it's, do you see this continuing? I guess, if this growth... I guess, if this growth, because we're looking here at growth of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year, more underwater.
Well, what's happening is, but we'll have some increase in the next year or so in the instructional side because of, you know, teacher raises, the step increases that we've been paying the last couple of years. They'll come in, they'll add money onto that non-core amount. But the last couple of years, non-core numbers are growing and the core amount for instruction has been kind of flat. And we've done some things, you know, in the area of technology and that type of stuff, home works and that type of stuff, pretty much the number of employees has been around and flat. You know, we, you know, but the non-core amounts to the two that continue to grow, most the charter schools and the state retirement system, those continue to grow. So for example, you saw it was, it went from eighteen three to nineteen, almost nineteen one, if you look at that sheet. And I did, you know, we can go through, if you look at the third page of that sheet, because as you guys go through this, I mean, I had to think of it myself today, trying to figure out, okay, why did this decrease here, you know, and stuff like that, where you, you know, and I work with it every day. So I tried to put some of those, some of those object codes of one eleven, one twenty-two, et cetera, that there's kind of a significant change in the numbers, the reason, for example, it looked like a million dollar deduction on the instructional side of teachers. So I was thinking, so that's the half a million that we didn't pay this year, that must have been four, four hundred and some thousand dollars. And we had that good year in healthcare last year, where we had a budget of five million two originally, and dropped it down to four seven, and split it even under that four seven. So that healthcare is in that teacher salaries infringement column under one eleven. So those two big areas will line share a million dollars, probably maybe more than that if I, you know, but I wanted to just, you know, try to pick out some things that I knew were, you know, something changes there. You can go through those if you want, but you can read them yourself, but.
So just, I guess, my real question here, so viewing this as, I'm picturing myself back in seventh grade math class and, you know, I'm in a car going fifty miles an hour and the train is going sixty miles an hour, I see this amount grow. Is there a way, is there a way for us to catch this? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm seeing, we're here, we're getting increased funding from the town and from the state, but that gap on what we're short continues to grow, even though the town is giving us additional and we're getting additional from the state. At any point, is that train going to slow down so we can catch it? Or do we have to, we need an infusion of more from both parties?
Well, I think next year you'll have, the sixteen numbers will see increases on the instructional side because you'll have twelve percent raises, you'll have double steps. So there'll be, there'll be, you know, some growth on that side to offset the non-core amount. And I would imagine we would eventually get to a point over the next couple of years, maybe seventeen or eighteen, Dr. Thornton, where the charter school, at least Blackstone Valley, will be, have all its grades filled. So you shouldn't still see, I don't know what year that is.
It opens its third school.
Well, then, you know, yeah.
So we can put that one off in the parking lot, because that's not going to be the reality.
I mean, as long as the charter schools have grown, six hundred thousand dollars a year. Yeah, something grows too, a couple hundred thousand, you got that seven or eight hundred thousand.
Something to take.
Growth on that side over a year.
We should take note of the fact, though, that if you read sixteen seven twenty-four, and we've had that up in that slide for ever and ever, number, item two says, "The state funds provided in accordance with this shall not be used to supplant local funds." And that's what's happening right now. We are, we are not contributing local funds the way that we should toward the educational program. So I've talked with Mayor Murray, I've talked with Councilor Schmidt, we are talking with the General Assembly. They're forming a study commission to see, are there any activities that can help communities like ours? And in addition, you know, does the funding formula have the baseline to which it can support changing schools, changing communities? We've met with Blackstone Valley Prep, and there's a few things that we have consensus on, which is, it would be great if their budget was not contained in our budget because it does put us in a difficult situation when it comes time to the budget discussion. We've also stated the problem it raises when it is contained within one budget is, last year, two point eight percent of the budget went strictly to charter school tuition and the remaining of the four percent was one point two, went to the school department. So it's, we're inching our way forward, but not moving fast enough. So both Mayor-elect, Councilor Schmidt, and some others have said that they want to work towards a solution. I think that that's, we have to find a way that it's not going to be in us versus them. And I don't believe that there's been largely a wall up between us, but it's a problem that needs a solution because the charter school's going to open school three in fiscal sixteen or fiscal seventeen. This doesn't end until two things, their local share appropriation reaches a hundred percent and the fact that their enrollment will increase to its low capacity. Mr. Duffy?
Can you have a sense of when they're going to be at low capacity? I'm always confused by this. I think they have around four hundred students now, and they're growing to twenty-four hundred. I'm not sure when they get there and.
Well. Based on, I'm sure they.
They're confident they're going to get there, I don't.
I'm confident we'll just keep staying.
Well, there's a cap, though. In the light, there is a cap on the total number that they can take, correct? They can't go above.
Right, in their charter, I guess, there's a limit.
I don't, I haven't read that, so I don't know, but.
It's an important question.
Yeah, so Dr. Thornton and I will be meeting with Mr. Chappetta on the eighteenth, I believe. So we can certainly ask him that question, so we'll do that. We'll ask him what his enrollment projections are. I know we had that information a handful of years ago, which we've kind of used to map out kind of a four or five year path, but that was, we're halfway into that activity. And I guess the other thing is, when it does come time for us to talk with the General Assembly, it would be great if each of us can be there representing the district because it's a challenge that we face every year and we can't continue to kick the can. We need to find a workable solution. And we've certainly digested this enough where the Department of Ed has said, "Your math is right. You're absolutely right." They've made it clear that they're really a policy group and not a funding group. So I think our appeal really goes to the General Assembly. It would be helpful if those who have parent connections inspire their parents to come, because this is important. It does impact their kids every year. And as we were talking with Dr. Thornton one, the other morning about the BEP, we were talking about, you know, Charo is offering a world language program in their elementary schools. There's no way we could do that unless we dictated it to the superintendent. And we know there's so many more things that we need to put in place. And that's the same community that has iPads for their high school students or.
I, I.
They have MacBook Pros.
MacBook Pros, yeah. So, and their per pupil expenditure isn't that significant compared to ours. It's like two or three thousand dollars more. But what they're able to do with that amount of resources, we're so far away from. And so as we, you know, hear great things about our Chromebars, we're kind of stuck in the position of we can only move so fast. And we know we have an aggressive team that wants to move all of these resources. And I think the students deserve it. I think we're able to do, one of the activities we should have for the next meeting is kind of a summary of what the UCOA, these sections break out to be. I think we've looked at, on that visually, but we're always at the bottom end of the instructional support and the face-to-face teaching end and the leadership end, kind of a little bit north of the bottom. But again, those are the things that are just, that's where it matters and that's where the rubber meets the road. So that's what I'd like to see for us to talk about next time. I don't know if anyone else has anything that we should have on the agenda, Mr. Fearholz.
I just have a question for Alex.
Yep.
How does the change in the out-of-district transportation affect these numbers?
What do you mean a change?
Well, the state is going to start picking up the full tab for out-of-district. Is that figured into any of, any of the twenty-fourteen or are we just going to wait for next year to figure that number out?
Well, no, it's filed, it's filed on budgets eventually. There's two or three pieces that make up the out-of-district transportation. There's vocational, there's charter school, there's a special ed piece, the biggest piece is the special ed piece and stuff like that. So that, that's why you can see the estimated state aid number, as they have funded us in over a few years, picking it up. It's, it's only a reimbursement of twenty-three thousand dollars, you know, for this year. And it's not a tremendous, it's not a tremendous big number. It won't change, it won't change this, that, that, that much. So the whole budget is probably, we budgeted about five ninety-five, wouldn't do better than that line here this year, probably in the five hundred thousand dollar range or something. And that's all gathered, especially that for charter. And in fairness, as you mentioned, the charter school, the one that is in our town, they're paying their own transportation. They hire their own separately on their own. So we don't really, transporting kids really, any significant, so beating kids and stuff, we don't have a big expense there at all.
Anything else?
I'm sure, I just want to say that this is all predicated, you know, these numbers based on state not kept by state aid and two facing a couple hundred million dollar deficit. Who knows what's going to happen next year?
Agreed. Can you make certain, Mr. Pranav, that the council and Mayor-elect get copies of these just as part of an informational packet? I appreciate that. Anything else? Mr. Duffy?
Thank you. So I wanted to reiterate what Bill was mentioning about the projections from Blackstone Valley Prep going forward. Because if, if we have to plan our budgets going forward on what we're going to get, we need rough numbers on, I mean, if right now they're roughly at a half of what their capacity is, they need to know, are they going to take ten percent next year, thirty percent the year after, fifty? You know, so we need some rough numbers so that we can figure that out to plan that. So, and I think that that's important because that affects everything from transportation, all the above, and that at some point, do we have to relook at, again, if you look, how many students is a total right now going to the Maryland Academies?
Three twenty, I believe.
Three twenty. So if, for the second argument, if that doubled up to six and change, seven hundred, do we have to look at a different way that we handle that at some point? Now, again, these are things that maybe they should have done years ago and maybe they should, but where we are, where we are right now. So what I'm saying is, is at what point do we have to discussion on, if we're up to six hundred, do we look at our buildings differently? Do we reevaluate, okay, now, school X now is just going to be grades one through three and this is going? So with those projections, at least maybe we can start looking at, and I don't want to say the R word, redistricting again, but how do we get there? Because with this train that keeps going farther away from us on the funding, that gap is getting larger, I think we might have to look at some different avenues as well right now.
Yeah, and I would counter that, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but by saying, parents spoke about how important their neighborhood schools were and the fact that, that that was really key to them. That mattered a lot. And there's a lot of research that talks about the value and the contribution that neighborhood schools brings. I struggle with the fact, though, that, that we wouldn't be able to offer neighborhood schools because we're not funded adequately and we have a growing population in a competitive school district in our own town just forces us to make those decisions. And I don't think that's right for the students, because what's right for the students is that we provide them with the best education possible. And it just seems like we continue to compromise that situation again and again and again. You know, we could certainly ask Dr. Thornton a model, what it would look like, but you say the big R word, like you said. It's, it is by far the toughest decision a school committee member will make, in my opinion. And when we were able to put kindergarten in place, we had at least something that provided value. This doesn't provide value, it just is destructive.
I just want to clarify one thing on that. So I'm not advocating for the R word. That's what I'm saying is, is that while we're going down this path, we can't keep our head in the sand. We have to at least look at other alternatives. If we can't get additional funding from the state, or if the state can't help us, or the town can continue to increase us, but not at the rate that we need, I think that at least we have to look at alternatives. That's my only suggestion. I'm not saying we put them on the table, but at least about exploring the alternatives.
Agreed. Thank you. Mrs. Teal?
Two things to add to that. One is, if you look from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen, even though some students are attending the charter school, the students that we have are actually increasing. So our enrollment is not decreasing, even though the charter school is offering competition. And I'd like to think that's because what we're doing in Cumberland is working and we're attracting more students into our district. So we, I'm not sure we're necessarily going to lose a net three hundred and twenty students as much as maybe we won't grow or we won't decrease, but right now, we're kind of filled into our schools. And we did have an extensive discussion last time about sister schools, in part because we recognize that in order for the, quote, expenses to follow the students, the only way you could do that is you had to start shutting classrooms down. And the only way you can shut classrooms down is if you group these students more carefully so that you could, if you lost twenty students in elementary grade, you weren't losing them across five schools, but maybe you were only losing them across two schools. And again, that was one hundred percent adamantly, chop our heads off, put them on sticks and burn them. The community did not want to talk about that. And we did talk about that in redistricting because for this exact same reason. We said, this is coming down the path, they're coming down the road, we need to look at other alternatives. This is the one way we can actually come up with savings. And they said, absolutely not, no way, don't even bring it up. We don't, we want our neighborhood schools. So if we support five, four thousand, four thousand five hundred students, why are four thousand five hundred students forced into a redistricting they don't want for the benefit possibly of a couple hundred students? It just seems completely skewed and unfair to the students that choose to remain in the Cumberland School District. And that just cannot be the solution to this problem.
Just one final point on the modeling and the lottery. Each other, four towns in the model. If we have saved forty or sixty students a year in our projection, we roll them out. Keep in mind, if another town underscribes, they can overfill our town. So our best laid model will be off by ten, fifteen students a year.
The second page I gave you on that charter school, kind of give you a little model and stuff. If you look at two thousand sixteen, I put it on the page, somehow they don't come up, but they're looking at an increase of seventy, probably estimating. So I took the number three twenty to three ninety. Up until then, others we added from charter schools, doubled to sixty. So I use sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, so, but to your point, they don't, they don't really, you know, they don't really know. But the sixty is a couple of years old and the seventy is a projection provided, I hope she's going to be a little eyeing it, to be honest with it.
And keep in mind that the local appropriation is still transitioning to the full amount. So if this school doubled in size tomorrow, our tuition would double. But then, as it rolls up so that the local share becomes a hundred percent, it's still significant, there's still a fair gap between that, those two points.
Yeah, sixteen to seventy-seven, two, two, one. And I've estimated seventeen, eighteen, you know, three hundred and twenty-some dollars a year, because that's kind of what it's been doing. So that's another piece of the puzzle that you multiply, you know, last, so it went up from sixty-nine seventy-three to seventy-two twenty-one. So all those three hundred and ninety kids, not only the seventy-two, all three hundred and ninety, they're multiplied by that additional three hundred and ninety dollars too.
Yeah.
So there's two pieces that are increasing.
Any questions, Mr. DeMond?
I'm sure it's all full-mice that Ry dictates how much we have to give them. I'd love to see a thirteen hundred dollar increase for a student for Cumberland children to come to our school versus having to dish it out to the other schools.
We could try and shake school. Indeed. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.